Good evening. Before our meeting, regularly scheduled meeting at six o'clock, we do have a special presentation of our annual action plan for 2024 from GCRNA. If you want to come on up, Emma, and you can take the wheel.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to come here to start the annual action plan. Actually, you are the first meeting I have with me that always supports me is one of our board chair. He's been there three, four years now. It's Alan White. So part of the annual action plan is I'm going to talk about, you know, what we do, who we are, what annual action plan is and come plan, what the funding sources that you have, what they are, what you can use it for, and your 2024 allocation. So what is annual action plan? This is something that we have to do. GCRNA has been the administrator of the federal funds, particularly specifically HUD federal funds since 1974, since the first fund which is CDBG. And we have a coalition between the county and the five municipalities. And in order to continue to receive these funds, we have to do what we call a consolidated plan, which is every five years. And then each year, we do a one-year plan towards that. So this time around, the annual action plan for 2024 is really the fifth year of our current five-year plan. So when we come back here next year, just before the meeting, we will have gone through a community needs assessment where the community will have, you know, basically pushing on intense public participations. Public participation, and then coming to tell you guys what they've said and things like that. And we'll take it into consideration as a plan for the next five years. So knowing that this is the fifth year, by the time we finish this whole year, we're going to do not just an evaluation of the one year, but the whole five years, what we accomplished, especially on affordable housing and some of the infrastructures and the number of families we've helped address in preventing homelessness, and of course some that have used it for businesses or facility improvement. And the funding for this year starts, of course, July 1st, half year this year, half year the next calendar year. So July 1, 2024, and ends June 30, 2025. And like I said, the main funding sources we get from HUD is community development block grant. But I'm going to keep saying CDBG, so that's not, you know. The other one is home. The other fund that we actually get that is not specific to any particular municipality, it's the emergency solutions grant that helps us to address homelessness. We're able to use it in all the five municipalities, including City of Greenville, because they don't get that fund. But for the purpose of your public here, we're going to be talking about CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant, and home. So when we say Community Development Block Grant, what can you do with it? It's like, basically addresses everything from housing to infrastructure, to business loans, to COF, to facility and public service. But it must meet three major national objectives. And the one main thing is low mod. It must serve low and moderate income families, and at least you must use 70% of your funds to address low and moderate income needs. Could be from housing to infrastructure or to after-school program, must serve low and moderate income. Well, I can tell you historically, since I've been with GCRNA almost 16 years now, we have always used over 90% of our funds to address low and moderate income needs in the community. It also can be used for when you call urgent needs, when we had the COVID funds and everything. That was the first thing we used until the federal government gave us a separate COVID funding. You can also use it to address law and blight. You know, you have an area you want, you know, it could be spot blight on an area, area blight, you need to clean up and things like that. So that's kind of what it does. Home investment is basically what it is, home. It helps you to produce houses, new construction or repair programs, or anything to help make housing affordable, attainable, accessible. So as I go along the program, I'm going to talk to you about some of the housing programs that we have, because it's not always going to be one shoe fits all, because the needs are different. So, and that comes down to what are we going to talk about the 2024 funding? But I like to show a three-year comparison of what's been happening. I can tell you that for the last three years, or four, our funds have been consistently the same, maybe a little change here and there. The grant ones are basically from the federal government, the program income, our proceeds that come into when we invested something and we're getting it back, and we put it back in your community. Like when we sold a house and it comes back to you, whatever type of fund used, if it's home, comes back to you as home program income. If it's CDBG, it comes back to you as CDBG. This is not all you have. We've got, you know, cumulative funds that you used in the past. I can tell you that right now, you have home funds close to $300,000 that so we could use to build additional houses. So there's 2024 add to it, so you don't lose it. So we're very, very particular when we look at how the funds are used, so that none of our funds are taken back from HUD. We use it at the right time and the right uses. So when we talk about 2024, we start with what we currently have, the final numbers that HUD provided to us for 2023, because they haven't given us the numbers for 2024. And we plan with that, when it comes back to us with the actual numbers, we'll make the necessary adjustments. So we start with the last final number from 2023, which is over 92,756. Your program income, CDBG, reduced a little bit, but one thing we wanted to make sure is, if you look down, we have an area for rental program income, because that's funding that is cycled back into the rental property as reserved, so we didn't want to count it as a separate program income that we'll have to use for something else. The home funding is about, close to $40,000. So we are projecting about 137,892. But like I said, if the numbers changes, we recalculate the grant amount to let you know what that's going to be. And having those funds, the three major areas we allocate at it, knowing the needs that you have and what you've been using your funds for, you have two sub recipients that have historically been using the funds, which is Center for Community Services and for your senior program. So we set aside 10% of that. The problem, the thing with CDBG funds, not a problem, is it gives you a threshold that you cannot exceed in your CDBG fund. And so we're very particular, it's not like $10,000, but it's like you can't exceed a particular threshold for that particular funding. And then, of course, all of your home funds are towards the new, whatever new construction we added to the existing cumulative funds that you have to be able to provide housing projects. We're looking to see properties that are around that we can build or help to partner, partner projects as well. Your, the remainder of your CDBG funds, we're setting it aside for the facility improvement. And we'll talk a little bit, well, you know, to see why we put in it, that it's a way to offset a project that we've done in the city. I said I was going to talk about some of the home, uh, housing programs, because it's really important for people to know what we have, and if they know people that need it or anything, they can always send to us. We have the house, homeownership units. GCRNA builds houses as well, in addition to our partner projects. And I think we're one of the few that are still doing homeownership units, because it's been very difficult to provide affordable homeownership units, and you know, the price of houses and things like that. We have an active project right now in the City of Greer, in their Spattenburg, city limits area. We're actually actively putting 14 townhomes. And we know how much it's going to cost us. We're heavily putting a lot of subsidy to make sure that all these first 14 are going to be for 80% and below. And it's costing us market rate to build those houses, so it's been very difficult. But that's our goal and mission, to make sure we provide that. We'll like to replicate that in other places as well. And we have rental units, and, but this part is one thing that we have a lot of our partners helping us with rental units. I can tell you that for City of Molding, they have four tax credit projects, two has been finished and an additional two coming on. So for now, they have existing 118 tax credit projects. That's been finished last year and occupied, fully occupied there from one bedroom to three. And so two others are coming also. We've just closed on one, the others actively trying to close to build another 100, close to 160 houses, which is going to be from 30 to 80% AMI. So there's a spread. And these are in a mixed community, so it's not a particular area access to everything, and the houses are beautiful, you won't even know that is income restricted or things like that. We also provide first-time home buyers program. So these we do to our partner where we provide up to $10,000 towards non-payment. But one of the things we're going to do is change that a little bit to give, add more subsidy, because housing costs, new construction is about $300,000, attending is not going to do anything to make it affordable. So we're really looking at that and changing the threshold to make sure we have more people using the program as well. Of course, we have the investor program, and a lot of repair program and unoccupied repair program. The repair program we have for seniors or persons living with disability, you're able to get 10 to 15, depending on the cost of what is needed. We address the code enforcement and making sure you're aid in place. That's the priority for us in that. The mortgage loan fund we have is only for providing M mortgages to houses that we've developed. And of course, the ESG I talked about really helps homeless, addressing homelessness. But one other thing I have to tell you that not just only ESG, last year, we talked to you guys about the Home Art Program that we had in the location plan. We've successfully started that project that one of our partners, basically that was giving about, we set aside 25% of the Home Art Fund to address rental assistance to, you know, and you'd be surprised at a lot of needs, even after COVID. So like in less than two months, we were able to help 84, this particular agents were able to help 84 households, you know, address, some of them are literally homeless or prevent homelessness. And we have three other agencies. You actually have Center for Community Services, who is working with Greer relief to do the same program. So if, we really encourage folks, if you understand, you know somebody who needs that to reach out, you know, we could do that. Of course, the CDBG funds is really what we use for infrastructure, facility, public services, and small business and facade. We did not put any funding in those, because we know you actively have a, you know, a program. So we have it if people need it, but we did not allocate any 2024 funds in that area. Something that is not in within the annual action plan, but it's important to note, because it's part of what we're doing with you all, is the city administrator graciously partnered with us. We thank the City of Fountain Inn to partner, partnering with us to do the coalition ground, brownfield, so we have a million dollars that can be used to do phase one, phase two, and redevelopment planning in properties in the City of Fountain Inn. We actually, City of Simpsonville is another agency, I mean, another municipality is also working with us. So that's another program to, to put back houses, I mean, properties back into redevelopment and putting it back in use. This is just pictures of their bathroom. We did the major infrastructure challenge that was there, that was almost more than half the cost of that. But we're very excited that it was completed on time, and I just wanted to show you how much of the infrastructure that was needed, that it was dig really deep and get connected to all that and across the street. And we really appreciate all the assistance we had with your staff, working with us to get this done. And the bedrooms there, so. Costs from engineering to soft cost to all that, so close to $500,000, but it's really worth it and seeing what's there. So we're very happy it's completed and in use. Small business loan, anybody can call us and contact us, but you do have a program, so that's also available. So this whole process, we anticipate your approval at least before the end of March. So that will go, it goes through our board approval as well, and then it goes to the county finance committee approval and the full county council for approval. Submission will be May 16th, that's the deadline for that, and if funding becomes available July 1, 2024. We welcome comments all the way through May 6 from people, so feel free to contact us or call, email, or anything, we'll take comments with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Emma. Well, thank you for your annual presentation. If it's okay, Russell, you said you needed just a couple seconds to switch some things over? Okay. So we'll, we'll take two minutes real quick to get the room reset. We had our, for those who joined us, we had a special presentation for our annual action plan for GCRNA, and we'll call the meeting officially to order in just like one minute when Slatten says it's okay.
Whenever you're ready, Mayor.
Okay. Let's quit. All right. I'll go and call this meeting to order. This is the regular city council meeting for February of 2024 for Fountain Inn. I thank y'all for being here today. If y'all wouldn't mind bowing your heads and joining me in invocation. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and for the opportunity to serve our citizens and our businesses and our visitors and our role as city council. Please give us your guiding hand as we make decisions for our community, bless those who live here, work here, and play here, and especially for our staff as they do the work of the city for the betterment of those who live here. In your name we pray. Amen. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up is actually, we just had our presentation on the GCRNA annual action plan that is required to have a public hearing, so we will open the public hearing up for the GCRNA. We had no one sign up. Are there any questions from council related to that plan? Any comments? Seeing none, since we do this every year, so thank you again for that. And we will, that will be on our agenda under new business. And with that said, I'll close the public hearing. Next on the agenda is proclamation for Black History Month. I will have it, we have it in our packets each year. We, we do this for the last, this will be our third year, doing a Black History Month proclamation. The first year, we partnered with the museum to have it displayed there. Second year, we worked, we were able to present it to Goldenview Baptist Church. I know Mr. Bell and Mr. Garrett were there for that. This year will be later next week. We'll send it out to council, presenting it to Tay Nelson and Bobby's Barbecue. And Tay and Sarah are here with their kids, so that is a part of your, a part of your packet. I believe it will be Friday at 11:00 a.m. next week at Bobby's Barbecue. We will present, it'll be nice framed and plucked, and we'll, we'll do, we'll do a full reading of it, of it then, but still let, let the, let the community know that that's, that's where we will kind of present the proclamation for that. So that's, that is that item for today. And sure, Sarah and Tay were asking, I'll, I'll sign it after this, and then we're good to go. That's logistics for you. And next up is the consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes from the regularly scheduled council meeting on January 11th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Colimber. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Bell, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, I'll give you a few updates on some of our projects, our Woodside Streetscape and Connector projects. The contractor is beginning to work on moving the utilities. You see some flags and a little bit of movement down Jones Street, that's what's going on there. The estimated completion with the contract for the contractor is March of '25. Our interstate welcome signage at exits 23, 26, we are still waiting on DOT to approve a permit for Duke Energy, so they can run power to that site, so we can see them in the evenings. Our Main Street Streetscape, the engineer for the project, Code Transco, has sent a letter to all of South Main Street property owners requesting permission form signatures. We had them on site today with city staff walking, walking the site. And construction is anticipated to begin by summer of this year. They have not yet bid out the project for, for contractors, but that is coming soon. Our parking lot revitalization project, which are the city-owned parking lots at Weston, Jones, and McKnight Streets. We opened bids on February 1st, and PNF Construction was the low bidder, and it was under budget. That will be adding approximately 18 parking spaces to our downtown, as well as two parking spaces for food trucks, and that would be over at the splash pad parking lot. Some upcoming events, this Saturday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., we have our annual daddy-daughter dance. It will be at the Activity Center this year, and it's catered by Bobby's Barbecue, and we appreciate them doing that for us. Our fire station number three and training center staff has received draft programming and some preliminary cost estimates. We will be discussing that going, going forward in, in the future. For our natural gas, our gas volume for January of 2024 set a new Fountain Inn natural gas record for the most gas consumed in one month for us. And then specifically on January 17th, we set a new daily consumption record of just over 10,000 decathems burned on, on a single day. An RFP has been issued for zoning ordinance and land development regulations rewrite. Those responses are due by February 29th. Our Citizens Police Academy is still accepting applicants. The deadline is February 23rd. You can go on our website and apply to be a part of our Annual Citizens Police Academy, which will run on February 28th through May, and that would be 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Wednesdays. For our youth basketball, our All-Star Tournament starts towards the end of February, and the state tournament begins beginning of March. And our spring baseball softball registration began on January 15th and will end on February 22nd. As of February 1st, we had 402 registrants already, so teams are filling up quickly. If anybody is wanting to sign up for spring baseball softball, they should do that soon. And our Chamber of Commerce is having their annual membership meeting on April 12th this year, 11:00 to 2:00 p.m. It's a luncheon, which is a bit of a change from some years past. And then our Yon Center for Performing Arts has Mary Poppins Jr. coming up in March, March 8th and 15th, as well as the March 9th through the 10th, and 16th through the 17th. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Any questions for Mr. Bell? Hearing none, I do want to note also on the agenda and in your packet is the report for Keep Lawrence County Beautiful, which I have the pleasure of serving as the chair of. Folks may recall, a couple of years ago, I think it's three now, all the cities in Lawrence County and the county of Lawrence got together to either pass a resolution, sort of restating their litter ordinances, or re, or redo their litter ordinances. We all now have similar litter ordinances, so there's a little bit of continuity across the county. And we also all contribute to, contributed to the formation of Keep Lawrence County Beautiful, which is a Palmetto Pride affiliate. I'm their board chair, because no way was I going to let the mayor of Lawrence be my board chair. But we, we all work together really well. Courtney is our facilitator for that. She works under the Lawrence County Chamber of Commerce, and this is her full-time job, and their report is in there. I encourage the public to look at it, just to know how effective that is. Greenville, we have, we are also a part of the Greenville chapter as well. But given that this is their first for Lawrence, their first sort of big report they've done, I wanted to be sure we included it. For folks who want to know, they had collected last year alone in Lawrence County, 141,846 pounds of trash off of our roads. So a lot going on. Yes, sir.
I have one comment on the department head report from the police department. I just want to thank our chief and the police department on the stepped-up enforcement, traffic enforcement on Main Street. It looks as if we issued about twice as many warnings. That's the best way to put it, about twice as many warnings. So I, I hope that we continue to, to put some, some, stress some, some additional presence in that area. It's, it's, it's an area that's very concerning. I see so many vehicles, and I'm sure, Bill, you, living on Main Street, understand, when you see vehicles going 50 and 55 and almost 60 miles an hour down Main Street, it's, it's just unreal. So thank you for your stepped-up presence.
Any other questions on this item? One item that is not on the agenda that we did not put on, that I'm going to do now without objection, there's no objection, is public comment. So we do have three individuals who signed up for public comment, which, not the public hearing. So slipping through, and I was like, oh, I don't know where this is. So there it is. So I'll go ahead and do that. We have three signed up. Brian Guerin. Can you state your name and address, just for the record, if you don't mind?
Sure. Forgive my voice. My name is Brian Guerin. My wife, Sandy and I, we live at 316 Stockland Trail in the Durbin Oaks subdivision of Fountain Inn. I just wanted to comment and tell you that thank you really for the good work that you as the counselors, Mr. Bell, Mayor McClair have done in really trying to be a welcoming place, particularly a welcoming place for us. When we have come, we're one of the newer residents here. We've been here for about a year and a half, and we always get whenever anyone hears that we're from some other place, they always say, "Welcome to South Carolina." And then the second thing they always say is, when we tell them that we come from Fountain Inn, they always say, "You made a good choice to live in Fountain Inn." And we would concur with that, and we think that's really good. I would just like to encourage you with three things, if we could. One is, is to really just embrace the past that you have. It is a very good past you, that you have of welcoming people from all realms and walks of life. So it's really important in this new envisioned plan and all of the things that are happening to really continue to welcome, welcome all those of different socioeconomic status. I've worked for 40 years in the Philippines and in metropolitan Boston with the urban poor, and I just want to tell you that people who are of lower socioeconomic status, then the misnomer is that they are not very good for a community. And I'll tell you from experience that these are people that you can embrace in a community and can make feel welcome, as you've made my wife and I feel. I'd just ask you also to think about as you begin your, your push towards growth, to really do it in a restrained growth manner, and to be able to look at zoning as a way to be able to make it and enforce it, so that everyone can have the ability to live here in Fountain Inn and not have to be subject to not having enough money, not having the proper housing, not having the proper ability to be able to live here. So I just wanted to encourage you with those types of things, and thank you for the good work that you did on the report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Riddle.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Welcome to the community, welcome to South Carolina. So the things that I'm going to say here, don't misunderstand. We've seen unprecedented growth in our area, and that's, that's why we're here. And I know these, these guys have worked really hard on the comprehensive plan, and I thank you very much for that. I appreciate the work and the, the effort that you put into it. I appreciate very much the phone call, very nice phone call I had from Mr. Don John. John Don?
Yes, sir.
Did I get it backwards? I'm a little dyslexic, sorry.
I'll answer anything.
You. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And for the modifications and the considerations to the plan, I appreciate it very much. I know that you guys are listening, and I think you're a good council. I got a visit from Joey Garrett over there, and down to the farm a while back, and we spoke about a lot of the things that are, we're discussing tonight, and I appreciate that, too. So thank you, council. You're, you're a good You're a good council. And, but I still want to have a couple of things I want to say. So we've seen unprecedented growth, right? You guys that have been here for a long time remember thirty years ago, you remember how things used to be, all right? Some of us can remember even further back than that, right? Diagonal parking, everybody did their shop in downtown. Remember that, Joey, Jay, you guys? So those days are gone, and we've got Walmart and Target, and we've got Amazon. So those, it's not going to be like that, like it used to be. So with all the new changes and everything that's going on, even with this plan, I feel like we're behind. I feel like we're behind the eight ball a little bit. Because I actually read the entire comprehensive plan today. And this is one page that just really interested me. You guys, all of you recognize it. And it is, folks behind me, it is, the dark blue is the city Fountain Inn, the city limits of Fountain Inn, and the outer blue is the draft study area. And that's what got my dander up last month, right? Still up a little bit, but I feel better. So the area is growing tremendously, right? So this thing right here is showing, it's showing me, it's showing us as we look at it, all the developments. It's got the locations, the names, and the number of homes that are going to be built, right, in the next couple of years, I guess. I counted, I added them up twice. I came up with five thousand and seventy new homes, not forty-five hundred, like it says on the bottom, but five thousand and seventy new homes in addition to every, all the growth that we have now. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of cars. That's a lot of change, all right? We've already seen the change, a lot of change, so we're going to see even more change. That's very concerning. So I guess what I'm saying is, I know you guys can't stop the growth, and I know that's what we're talking about is responsible growth, but I'd like to see you use your influence to let's slow this thing down to cold molasses pouring out of a jar. Let's be picky. Let's be demanding of our developers. Because remember, these developers live out of town. Joey, do you know any of them that live local? No? They live, they're in Japan. I'm not dissing the Japanese, y'all, but I know that we've got a lot of Japanese money in the area. That's on the other side of the Ocean Sea. That's not local. Those people are going to do their thing, and we're going to be stuck with what they did forever. So let's be picky, let's be slow, let's be demanding. And I'll tell you, there's another thing that I'm concerned about is annexation. And I understand, you guys talked to me till you were blue in the face about if you don't want to be annexed, you don't have to be. Okay, well, that's fine. And I understand that these days, the way you guys have it set up, it's got to be, am I right? Correct me if I'm wrong, it's got to be a hundred percent unanimous? Yeah? Okay. Well, that's good. Well, that could change one day. Just want to say, that could change one day. But annexation is scary to a guy like me. It's scary even if it happens across the street. I don't even want to be that close to it because we have a farm. Nancy Garrison is going to speak after me. She's got a farm. She's been impacted more than any of us on Durbin Road because of the irresponsible growth of Lawrence County. And that's what it is. It's absolutely irresponsible and almost criminal. And they just grow for the sake of growing. But for, a farmer doesn't want to be in the city, the farmer's in the country. The farmer doesn't want the city across the road or next to him, and neither does Andy Sloan, my good friend down on Jones Mill. And I know you're going to be talking about it, and I understand what you're doing, but that's one of the things that I was talking about last week. Andy Sloan, who isn't here tonight, his son runs Sloan-Grown Farms. It's a small homestead operation. He makes a living, he grows chicken, he sells eggs, honey, produce, and he raises hogs. And if he's annexed, he's going to be, he's got property that is right beside that property, he's got property across the road, and I feel for him. And that's the kind of thing I'm talking about, is you say in the plan, you want to, you want to embrace rural, well, let's embrace it. And let's, what can we do? What can we do to embrace it? Number one, we got to, you got to be careful about where those homestead farms are. There's a lot of them popping up. And so I just want to, I just want to throw that out there to you. Let's be real careful with annexation, guys, because it affects a lot of people. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Garrison?
Of course, I'm Nancy Garrison, one sixty-four Garrison Arena Drive Fountain Inn. So I'm going to try not to overlap that too much, but it's kind of, it's a little bit of the same thing. And you know that us being in Lawrence County, a lot of what's happened to us doesn't have anything to do with the city of Fountain Inn. But because of what I've learned and through my studying and doing FOIA's and researching what's occurred and everything in our county, not you as individuals, but it's hard for trust of government, to be honest with you. I've learned too much. And so it's a struggle when we do see the study that we have, and I know that y'all have to do it, and I understand that you have to do the comprehensive plan, it's a five-year update and a ten-year complete overdue. But, you know, and our county's greatly behind on that. We're like about four years out of it needing to be done, which it's in the process. So, you know, it's just hard for us because we've had the damage that we've had occur. You know, as it coming right down, we've had runoff issues. We see the damage to the wetland area. We see the damage to South Durbin Creek. It's a big struggle. So, you know, our point is, and I looked at, you know, I've read a good bit through the comprehensive plan, and I do just implore Fountain Inn to really look at some of the things that people said. And one of the main housing things that people were looking for were single-family dwellings with a yard. And that's not what we've had so far, outside the city limits or a whole lot. I know density is supposed to be more in the city limits, but that's not what's been occurring. You know, and then like Ashley was talking about, the annexation. Out in our area, we kind of see the writing on the wall because we've had Fountain Inn Natural Gas lines come down in front of our house, down Hunts Bridge connecting for another source for natural gas. Well, that wouldn't be occurring if the thought of more development was a good possibility of coming where we're at. And then we rewas now trying to, negotiations with other landowners for easement, you know? If you don't negotiate with them, they're going to take it through intimate domain anyway. So we've got sewer coming, so when you have water, sewer, gas, you have more density. And I do thank y'all for looking out for the area in your study area that y'all actually said this is more of an area that needs to be preserved, and that you kind of added that to it. We appreciate it. And I do want y'all to know, we really do appreciate what you've done. To me, this is a really good study in comparison to what we've had so far on our end in the county. And I do believe y'all are trying, but I really do hope that you look at what was said in this plan and what people were saying, and of course, how it did explode on social media. And, you know, people didn't completely read it and didn't understand, but that I do believe the majority of the community of Fountain Inn is looking for it to slow down and control it. Because it is, we've still got a lot more houses to be built out where we are, and it's already major troublesome as far as traffic and different stuff, and even the school systems. And I even looked up the burden that Lawrence County put on the Greenville County school system, and over two thousand homes will be built that go to Greenville County schools that's exploded already and overrun with students. So thank y'all for your time. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you for what you're doing, and I do believe that y'all absolutely do care, and we just hope that it kind of slows down and gets under control. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. All right. Being the end of public comment, we'll move on to unfinished business, which is, first up, second and final reading of ordinance twenty-two-four dash one, which is the envisioned comprehensive plan. Mr. Bell, you have, yeah, you have the update, I believe, correct?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We got a presentation, it's very quick, up on the screen, and you have it in your packet, but next slide just again reiterates the purpose of a comprehensive plan and what it is. So this is a long-term community vision guide to help the city achieve a set of common goals. This is a requirement in South Carolina for any municipality or county that has zoning. Next slide, we definitely heard the public comment about growth, especially in the Durbin Road, Happy Valley Road area, about the impacts to working agriculture and preserving that area. And so from first to second reading, we did make a couple edits. We expanded that conservation design overlay to include the existing agricultural lands along Durbin Road east of Happy Valley, and we expanded the low-density residential area north of Durbin Road. And so if you go to the next slide, you can see how we have made that change from the draft future land use map to what is in your packet and was being proposed tonight, as well as some additional strategies were added in the natural resources elements of the comp plan, considering zoning updates, which we have underway, utilizing and refining that conservation design overlay, which again would occur in our rewrite of our zoning and LDR, and encourage conservation easements, which is starting to happen more and more in the upstate with entities like Upstate Forever and some others, Subkind Land Trusts. And so with that, we, I'd recommend approval of the envisioned comprehensive plan on second reading, and happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I'll make a motion to approve on second and final reading ordinance twenty-two-four dash one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Questions, comments?
Not too much of a question. I was just going to publicly thank our city administrator and our consultants for collaborating with us, particularly in light of our last meeting and some of the public input that we got from Mr. Riddle and some folks that we heard from in addition to him, particularly on the density and wanting to make sure that we're preserving to the best extent that we can through this plan, that we're preserving the rural character and preserving that for the next generation and continuing to make Fountain Inn attractive. And it's what brought the Geren's here and what has kept so many of our families here. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Mayor Proten. And again, I just want to reiterate that the comprehensive plan, you know, one of the required elements is that future land use map. A comprehensive plan would be short-sighted to only look at your existing city limits, and so that's why we have a study area that looks at the future land uses for an area that's much larger than your city limits. That's true actual planning there. And then the other overshadowed I want to make was our resiliency element. I wanted to thank the folks at Furman University and the Shai Institute, I believe some of them are here today, for the work that they did on the resiliency element, which was a new element that was added to, as a requirement for comprehensive plans. I believe that our resiliency element is going to be one that other municipalities and counties look to as a model in the future, since this is one of the first comprehensive plans in South Carolina that have had to do the new required element. I just want to thank them for their efforts.
Can I share one more thing? And it's just to piggyback on what you mentioned in terms of the scope of the map, of that philosophy, you trust but verify, so I trust you. But I went and looked at a number of other counties just to get a sampling of what their maps looked like, or excuse me, and other jurisdictions to see what their maps looked like and how much they extended beyond the bounds of their city limits. And every single one, I looked at six different ones across the state, had the maps pan out beyond just their city limits. So this seems to be a practice where you're just looking and anticipating what the future could look like and not necessarily looking with a jewel in your mouth at what you want it to be, but just sort of preparation. So thank you for making that comment in terms of why we have a map that looks beyond just the city limits.
I just want to follow up on one of the comments that Mr. Riddle made, that yes, thanks for your kind comments about our current council. We are very well-aligned, and we have the interest of Fountain Inn top. I mean, that's our goal, was to make this the best place to live, but you always have to keep in mind, council members can change. So, you know, what we do now is going to be very important to be aligned and continue to be aligned.
Any other questions, comments? I only had one, I want to thank Brian and Sandy too. I know y'all came to all the meetings for the comp plan. I appreciate your continued input, and your comments are very well-valued. I also do want to say there is in the plan sort of a, I guess you could call it a top ten almost recommended list. I don't know, something that we've been, people have talked to us about, it's been talked at Lawrence County, Greenville County, almost every level around here, our impact fees, and we're not going to get into that today because you will find that we are going to try to, that is one of the top ten recommendations is to assess whether or not impact fees are something that the city would like to seriously consider. It is not the silver bullet, a lot of people make them out to be. There are a lot of good things, though, and I think, but that's one thing I know, this council's going to start opening the hood on and seeing, make sure all that works. It's a very complex state law that governs impact fees. And so we're going to try to, at the same time we get educated on it, we're going to make sure we put that up to the public as well, because this is a conversation that will be beyond Fountain Inn at some point. And then, yes, Mr. Riddle, one of your comments about annexation, I'm not going to get into it because that is a whole class of annexation under state law, but there are a couple of ways you can annex under state law. Various percentages of the ownership of property have to approve, have to be a part of it. If it's a hundred percent of the property owners requesting annexation, that's the cleanest version. That is the only version that this council really has ever considered, to my knowledge. It's the only version our administrator's ever administered in this numerous cities he's worked for. Personally, it's something I would be very adverse to, anything but the hundred percent annexation method. It's a very high bar to meet. The state law is very cognizant of property rights and very supportive of them. So to your point, yes, but I didn't, there are other options, we just don't consider them really.
And they have to do the requesting.
Yeah, and it still is requested by the property owner, correct. Still is requested by the property owner. If a whole neighborhood wanted to come in, they'd have to get either a hundred percent, seventy-five percent, or different percentages of homeowners to ask for that. And then the bar is set at different levels in order to do that. So again, that's a whole other book, but I know annexation is a big part of this, and that is highly governed by state law, but we have only ever considered, and for me only, that's the only method I'm really interested in considering ever is a hundred percent. So those are kind of two points for me. And I do want to thank our staff for your work on this over the last year. I thank this council for the very thoughtful consideration. I want to thank all the people who participated in the survey, who came to our events, who gave us, you know, personal feedback on it. A lot of those concerns that I've heard over the last year, I believe are addressed in almost every, in almost all of them are addressed in this plan in some form or fashion. And we are committed to this roadmap for the future of our city. So thank you, staff, and thank you to the citizens for your input, and I think our planning commission and Board of Zoning Appeals, who are part of this process, and our citizens steering committee as well. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor approve on second and final reading ordinance twenty-two-four dash one, the envisioned comprehensive plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is new business approval and appointment of Randall Tuttle as Public Works Director. Mr. Bell?
Mayor, we have a candidate for our vacant Public Works Director position that I would like to appoint and ask for your approval on. Mr. Randall Tuttle has worked for Greenville Water since October of two thousand and six. He lives nearby over in Pelzer. He has a bachelor's degree in business administration. I believe he's working on his master's. He has a CDL license. He has been in the trenches with folks and has transitioned to leadership roles at Greenville Water, and I do believe he would make a great Public Works Director for us with his background in utilities and supervising large crews of sixty or more. with his background in utilities and supervising large crews of 60 or more. And so with that, I'd recommend approval of the appointment of Randall Tuttle as our next Public Works Director. If if approved, I believe Mr. Tuttle plans on starting like next Thursday. And so we're, he's excited. I know we're excited. We appreciate Ms. Lori Cooper for all of her work as as interim Public Works Director. She's not going anywhere.
She's not allowed to.
Yep, she will be there to to help guide Mr. Tuttle in any any assistance he needs.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. I do want to go, Lori, thank you so much for being a steady hand for our for our crews. It's greatly appreciated. Mr. Clemmer and I had the opportunity to be a part of the the interview process for Mr. Tuttle, and we enjoyed getting to know, getting to know you. And welcome to your wife for being here. Thank you for being here as well. And I believe it's it's a really great, you're a great individual to take this position on for our community. Mr. Clemmer, do you have anything for?
Yeah, welcome.
I'll make a motion to approve and appoint the approval of the appointment of Randall Tuttle as Public Works Directors. Are there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Clemmer. Is there a question or comment? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Welcome to the team. Next up is first reading of ordinance AXZ 2024 dash 01, to the annexation of property 1344 Jones Mill Road. Mr. Bell?
Mayor, this is an ordinance for first reading AXZ 2024 dash one, which would annex approximately 8.22 acres on Jones Mill Road in the city limits of Fountain Inn. It would zone the tax map parcel ending in 1003 to R15 Residential District and assign the parcel to Council Ward Five. Our Planning Commission voted six to zero in favor of the annexation and zoning of the property on January 25. No one spoke in opposition to the request at the public hearing. The Fountain Inn Museum, which is a nonprofit, owns approximately 20 acres adjacent to this, eight acres, and it's adjacent to the Parkland Hills subdivision, which is already located within the city limits of Fountain Inn. Those 20 acres are located in zone five of the existing Eagle Springs Plan Development, which is defined as the conservation open space portion of the project and is located along Durbin Creek. The applicant plans on establishing a nature park to include walking trails, pedestrian bridge over Durbin Creek, informative displays, and potentially some picnic shelters. I believe their intention is to get the old mill back operational and, you know, having our youth in the area to understand and embrace that history and past. And I believe it's, the the park is mainly for for passive recreation and some learning. And with that, I'd recommend approval on first reading of AXZ 2024 dash one.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there, get on the table, is there a motion on first reading of ordinance AXZ 2024 dash one? Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Questions or comments?
And I know this is R15, but it's it's also on the historic, that property is on his, Greenville County's Historic Registry.
Yes, the Fountain Inn Museum requested Greenville County to place this property onto the Greenville County Historic Register back in 2021, I believe. And so any sort of structures built on the site would have to go through the Greenville County Historic Preservation Process of of looking at permits and and making sure that they they follow the the guidelines and standards of the Historic Preservation Committee.
And they own the adjacent property to it as of right now. Mr. Riddle brought up a question. I would I would like to talk some more to like Mr. Sloan. I briefly talked to him on the phone yesterday, but he's out of town on a mission trip right now, on how it would affect, you know, with the kids in the park, which is going to be a park regardless, whether it comes into the city or not. I would, would there be a way to table this until next council?
You can, we can make that motion. You can also, this is first reading, there is a second reading.
Yeah, there is a second reading, and questions can be answered then. Then, yeah. So that that's, I would also echo our, part of our zoning is, this is the, this is, R15 is actually the best zoning for it under our current zoning. I think when we do a rewrite, exploring the idea of, you know, it's whether it's an institutional zoning or it's something that provides, because right now all of our parks are also R15 in the in this whole city. So City Hall is R15, I think, or one or maybe C1 there. But so, you know, I think there's a better zoning tool, but this is the best one we got for them. I do, yeah, the Historic Register will give a lot of restrictions. I believe they have an agreement with the person they bought it from as well with his, I don't want to misquote, but I believe a deed restriction as well on use. So I think some concerns over, you know, zoning R15, I don't believe this can be 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 residential. Also, the whole thing's a flood plain. So I don't think you'd get any homes there, really. And yes, half of, as Mr. Bell stated, a large a large portion of the project scope is already in the city limits. This portion is is not. And so that's that's the primary reason for this request is to have the whole thing, because it's nearly impossible to de-annex something under state law. So it's very hard. So they'd like to be under one jurisdiction. We do have also have higher levels of permitting and and store and and different things, I would I would say as well. But yeah, Mr. Garrett, getting your questions answered. I agree getting those.
I have a couple coming in.
Yeah, whoever wants to go first, Jay or Mr. Thompson?
Who's going to maintain the park, whether it comes in the city or State of County?
To my knowledge, it's either going to be the Fountain Inn Museum, or I know in in the past, they have had discussions with Greenville County. I was told by a Greenville County staff member that they were looking at possibly owning and maintaining it at some point. But one of the things that I would make sure that that you know is that annexation does not equal ownership. So whether it was in the city limits or or not doesn't necessarily mean that the city would own and and operate and maintain it. I'm not aware of them, of the Fountain Inn Museum ever even asking the city for for something like that.
What would be the city's liability to protect this? And they will add police protection for a big city, but we're already doing fire.
Yeah, the property is already located in our fire service territory. As as mentioned, the the surrounding property just to the north of it already is in the city limits, and the city limits goes pretty far further north than that. So from a from a police protection standpoint, they're they're already having to go down Jones Mill. I don't envision a ton of calls for service there in now or in the future. But again, they are already headed out that way anyway.
My biggest concern is traffic, getting in and out of that property. It's a blind spot on that downhill.
Because they have not submitted any sort of building permits or plans, I, and then Jones Mill Road is a is a DOT road, I had, I'm not, I'm not sure if DOT will make them do some sort of traffic impact analysis or not. That I think this is just too preliminary for for something along those lines.
With that said, I think it's too preliminary for asking for a vote. I would like more information. I have a couple of concerns. One is, is I inherited in Ward Four, a split area that goes all the way out to Carolina Springs. And it it really bothers me when I see a Fountain Inn police car going through Greenville County to get out to Carolina Springs. They have no jurisdiction in the event that something happened on Jones Mill. Is that right, chief? If if something happened, if they saw something happen, they they really can't do anything except call
That's correct.
the county. That that's not, and we inherited this. You you weren't involved, I wasn't involved. I wasn't on council then. That was a bad decision in my mind. The the second part of this is Mr. Thompson, I had a dear friend and church member killed on that road not long ago. And going in and out of there, it scares me to death thinking about some type of mini bus or a larger bus carrying school kids to go to some type of program out there and exiting out onto Jones Mill. I have a big concern with that. That's a it's a dangerous road, and I understand it's up for repaving. And in many instances, repaving means just more speed. So those are my two comments that I would like to to offer.
Well, my thoughts on that, Mr. Cora, I don't disagree on the sightlines and all that. I don't believe that, you know, if someone would like to move this, you know, to the to the next meeting for a first vote, that's totally within the purview. I don't think annexation stops any of that. It doesn't stop the park from happening. Doesn't stop the, it doesn't, it doesn't stop the issue of jurisdiction, because we still have to go out there. So that's one element to think about. It just doesn't really do any of those things that we, we don't have the ability to force that, because given it's not residential development, it doesn't trigger any sort of traffic impact on our end. But I don't disagree on asking some questions about how that's going to be addressed.
I'd just like more information.
Yeah, I I agree on that front. Just that's the the technical thing. This doesn't necessarily force any of that. They also have some funds. Most of that's going to the mill itself. But so anyway. Mr. Sanders, did you have anything? Or you're good?
I'll ask. I know we alluded to Mr. Sloan's concerns that he expressed. Did we have any other residents or citizens express opinions on on this proposed annexation?
Not to my knowledge. This was, this annexation request was brought before the Planning Commission, I believe in 2021. And I can't remember what what the public comment was like back then. But this most recent public hearing at the Planning Commission, there was no one in support or opposition.
Well, according to the letter written by the museum requesting annexation, there was, they apparently met with several residents out there with no opposition.
Yeah.
So we do have a a motion on the floor for first reading. There is second reading if this passes. Is that, just checking, Mr. Don?
Yeah, can I ask one more question? I I get the sense that there might be a preference to amongst some of my colleagues to get some answers to some questions. Are there implications to the museum, to the Jones Mill project if this were tabled for a a meeting? I mean, are they losing out on a on a deadline or or any funding that needs to be used in a certain period?
That would be speculation on my part. I'm not aware of anything, no.
I don't think it would.
Okay.
I don't think so. Anyone have any?
Maybe they can give us a presentation?
Yeah, so as of right now, there's still first first readings on the floor. To Mr. Don's point, if someone wants to table it, that's fine to the next meeting. We also have second reading.
I'll make a motion to table it.
Okay, I just didn't want to offend anybody by calling the vote if that was the will. There is a motion table. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion on that front? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We'll move on to table to the next re, uh, next city council meeting. It's first reading ordinance 2024 dash two, budget amendment.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance to update and amend our fiscal year 2024 budget to account for additional revenue and some additional expenditures throughout the year. So anytime a municipality adopts a its annual budget ordinance, we're staff and elected officials, we are projecting receipts and expenditures. And then oftentimes during the fiscal year, circumstances make it appropriate to adopt an amendment to reflect those deviations in certain line items. So this budget amendment, as presented, has a total increase to revenue of $361,845, as well as an increase to expenditures of the exact same amount. This is a a balanced budget, and it's a balanced budget amendment. The the total amended revenue and expenditures expenditures are $286,190. So from the revenue standpoint, we have received additional tax revenue that we that we projected. We also received interest income that exceeded budget. This budget amendment will adjust those revenue projections based on revenues actually received. On the expenditure side, we had an increase in special events and Christmas festival expenses. We are adding in the Victims' Advocate Department expenditures as well as the revenue. We are adding in the annual performance bonuses for our staff and adding some additional expenses for our Manuel Sullivan and P D Terry Park to get those fields ready for the upcoming baseball softball season. I believe that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve on first reading ordinance 2024 dash two? Thank you, Mr. Blackstone, second. Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, the only thing I was going to add is that just like a normal budget ordinance, we will have to have a public hearing before second reading. I think the plan is to have that public hearing at our next council meeting in in March. And there would potentially be some some additional changes between first and second reading, but I will let you all know those.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Motion's on the floor. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is first and final reading Resolution 2024 dash two, which is CDBG and home funds. Mr. Bell?
This is an annual resolution that you all are asked to approve. It follows our GCRA Annual Action Plan. The the total allocation from CDBG with program income and what we receive from the federal government would be $97,842. And then in home funds, a total of $40,050. And with that, I'd recommend approval of this resolution adopting the Annual Action Plan for GCRA with our CDBG and home funds.
Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024 dash two? Thank you, Mr. Garrett, second. Mr. Sanders, any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Next up is Resolution for Major Change on Woodside Plan Village, uh, Woodside Village Plan Development. Mr. Bell?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. PZ 2024 dash one would realign the boundaries of the existing development zones for the Woodside Village Plan Development. Planning Commission voted unanimously in favor of the major change. So you all approved a major change to this plan development back in October of 2022. And that would have given way to the construction of an apartment structure and similar design to the former Woodside Mill in Zone Two, as well as some infill new single family homes within the Mill Village in Zone Three. The prior approval included an access point on Fairview Street, but SCTOT has mandated that the access off of Fairview Street be emergency only. So the applicant is now proposing the realignment of Zones Two and Three to better reflect property ownership. So the previous approval, some of the zone with the apartment complex was also included with the city owned land, which is still encumbered at the moment. And so this really just reflects the zones that are controlled by the applicant. And the future Zone Three, Zone Four would be almost entirely city owned property. So Zone Two, under this proposal, would be expanded to include the previous area designated as Zone Three. Zone Two would consist of the Mill Apartments, some stacked flats, and an above grade stormwater pond. Future developments in Zones One, which is unchanged, which is a mixed use of mainly retail, commercial, and Zone Three, those are going to require a major change in 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 the future. This major change would just allow for the Zone Two, which would be the the multifamily piece of this project to move forward. The Planning Commission would still have to approve a final development plan before being able to obtain building permits. The overall density of the project remains relatively unchanged. And again, part of this major change is being necessitated by changing the access off of Fairview Street from a full access to an emergency access only.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Is there a motion to approve, you said, PZ 2024 dash one?
Is there a motion to approve, you said, PZ 2024-1?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Don. Any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Don't, do we have a need for executive session? I don't think so. Okay, so there is no need for executive session tonight. That being said, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move on.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, there a second?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. Any questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.